Good morning. Sorry we're in a little bit late this morning, but we've got a lot of business to do today. So, Mr. Daugherty, if you would.
Let us pray. Lord, may your goodness and love be present amongst us today. Come bless our gathering with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, build in each of us a deep respect for one another. Lord, we pray for hope. Come stir your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. Lord, we pray for vision. May your vision fill our lives as we seek to work for the betterment of Wayne County. We ask all this in your glorious name. Amen.
Please state your base flag, your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for the raspy voice.
We just pledged. Has anybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any corrections to the minutes? I entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, got that done. And Mr. Hennicutt, you've got some adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Three things we would like to walk on to our agenda. One is a request from the Wayne County Public School System to allow the sale of timber on 109.12 acres on approximately 10 10 different school sites. Add that to consent, and then we have two budget amendments, both for the Maxwell Center. Number 248 is a moving of $26,000 from contingency to capital outlay buildings. And Budget Number 239 is moving of funds from contingency and advertising to program supplies in the amount of $80,000.
A question on that.
And then we did add two this morning. It was the DSS Agent 3 and the Catch a Glimpse video that we would like to do under new business.
Okay. Question.
And, and, excuse me, we do have banquet chair bid. And the Withers-Ravinell proposal recommendation from WCDA for the design and engineering work for the Goldsboro Industrial Campus, which is formerly known as the Bryan property.
I had a question on the request from the school. That was on 10 properties?
It was 10 properties, yes, sir.
So they're selling the timber off of all of their property?
Yeah, for a total acreage of 109 acres.
Is the 109 acres?
Yes, sir.
And they're getting 150 for that?
There, I think that was their...
I think somebody needs to go back to the drawing board on that.
I think we need to table that until we discuss it some more.
Okay, we can...
That's low.
That is very low.
That's very low.
Will you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll put it before motion. Table that until we talk about it a little bit more.
Okay.
Just don't add it.
Okay, just don't add it, please. Okay, just don't add it.
Yeah, so, okay.
We'll come back to that in two weeks.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any more adjustments of the agenda, commissioners? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Any motion on the floor? Any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. All right, well, we may go ahead and move into public comments. We're a few minutes late, but we won't get called up, so our public comments section is open. If anyone wants to come up, please give me your name, your address, and your phone number. Good morning, Mr. Daugherty.
Good morning. How are you? I'm Martha Bryan, 1808 Salem Church Road, Goldsboro. I'm the Senior Tar Heel, excuse me, Senior Tar Heel Legislature Representative for Wayne County. And back in October, excuse me, I was in Chapel Hill and heard a wonderful SBI agent speaking on drugs and medications for seniors. We're fortunate enough to have her come next Wednesday. We're not even in her district, but her supervisor has allowed her to come. And she will be speaking at the Senior Center next Wednesday, January 24th, at 10:30. And I would love for all of you to show up and come and support her and support me for bringing her in. It's free. She's not charging anything to come. But she's probably the most dynamic speaker I've ever heard in my entire life of any conferences I've ever been to. But she talks about seniors and anybody really about how the drug situation is, as well as our seniors keeping their medications safe, what to do with them, trying not to get overmedicated, caregivers coming and stealing their medicines. Just really, really a dynamic speaker. So I would like to encourage you folks to come join us next Wednesday at 10:30 at the Senior Center. And it'll probably only, excuse me, only last about 30 to 45 minutes at the most as all she'll be speaking. But she's coming in from Oxford. And those of you who have worked on farms, she's a goat farmer. So in addition to her SBI work, but she is an SBI Special Agent with drugs. So thank you.
What time was that again?
10:30.
10:30.
And we're hoping to have the Senior Center, sir.
Somebody already put it on my calendar.
Well, I have talked to Carolyn Dem, so they've got it. But I would appreciate all of you coming, and I think you would be, you'll leave feeling very good about what she has to say and what we need to look for with our seniors and really just anybody. When I had seen her, she had just put a doctor and a nurse practitioner in jail for doing overmedicating and just causing some problems with drugs. So she's right on top of everything, an excellent speaker. So I look forward to seeing you next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Barry Merrill. I live at 432 Club Knolls Road in Dudley. My phone number is 919-922-1499. I speak today in praise of a courageous and controversial and split vote of the Board recently. I particularly praise Mr. Daugherty, along with Mr. Cromarty and Mr. Pay. To be clear, you are all good men, and I know you are all trying to do the right things for Wayne County. But I appreciate particularly you three for doing what you did. Mr. Daugherty, you correctly pointed out when additional school construction money was requested recently, Wayne County has not been funding school construction needs. The big construction plan approved a year ago was a holdover from 10 years ago, as you pointed out. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that probably would not have happened, not have gone through if it weren't for Seymour Johnson saying that that base was in jeopardy if we didn't do something to improve our schools. As the publisher of papers who serve northern Wayne County and the Rosewood communities, I've been very proud of the hard-fought dollars that were invested in those schools as they should have been, that serve Mr. Mayo's and Mr. Acocks and Mr. Gurley's grandchildren. Unfortunately, I live in the south end of the county now. The south end of the county has had to get by with the crumbs that fell from the table, if you will. I speak particularly of Dudley and Mount Olive. There are two of our schools that are within 10 miles of my home that are 80 years old. The grandchild of a school board member takes a coat with her when she goes to one of those schools because even on warm days, because they can't regulate the heat and the cooling in that 80-year-old building. At Southern Wayne High School, they are waiting for a second gym. CBA Cock got a gym, a second gym, 25 years ago. And if Mr. Cromarty hadn't spoken up, it wouldn't have been on the most recent construction plan. And I will say, too, they haven't started construction yet. It was supposed to have started, but I'm not holding my breath. So I don't know if they'll get that gym or not. Mount Olive Middle is identified as one of the two worst schools in the county, and it is not 80 years old, but it's also not on the list to be replaced. I know there are other school needs out there in Goldsboro and Eastern Wayne particularly that are not being discussed right now. I know there are other facility needs in the county. And there are also taxpayers demanding lower taxes. You lowered taxes four years ago. The feds are lowering taxes, and they are the ones that take the big cut out of my paycheck. Any realtor in the county will tell you how much our schools affect our property values. Taxpayers like Mount Olive Pickle, Southern Bank, and UMO will tell you how hard it is to hire good, young professionals to work here and pay taxes here because of our schools. Mr. Daugherty, thank you for having the common sense and the courage to stand up for our schools. And thank you, Mr. Cromarty and Mr. Pay. And I thank the rest of you. Our future generations need your investment. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? We'll wait till you get up here.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Valda Rouse Figueroa. I'm going to Terrestraw, Rosewood, North Carolina. I don't like giving out my address. I just wanted to say once again, I'm here on behalf of my mother, Elsie Rials, my husband, Aaron Figueroa, and myself, Valda Rouse Figueroa, in reference to our FEMA home. The last time I spoke before the commissioners, I did speak with Mr. Chip, and he wanted to know the name of the person at FEMA that told me that we had to be out of the loaned FEMA trailer next month. As I told him, in 14 months, I have spoken to several people, if not close to hundreds of people, in reference to our situation with FEMA. So to give a specific name, I would not be able to do. Also, we are not just sitting around waiting for someone to drop off, you know, a bag full of money or a check at our temporary location. We've been very proactive from day one. I just got a call on Friday from the VA, the center at the VA on Ash Street. I went personally, spent two and a half hours there, three days after they opened up that location back in November. I think it was December the 30th. It was on a Saturday. And I was told that since my application was completed, it would be forwarded up to those that needed it. On Friday, I got a call, and I was told that I needed to bring in a copy of my mother's car registration from prior to October 2016. I said, "Okay, you guys are just figuring this out." I said, "Where is my application? Did they tell you this back from the state?" She said, "No, your application is still in our office in Goldsboro on Ash Street for the last almost two months, sitting with everyone else." I said, "That's not what I was told." I was told that since my application was completed, all of the documents were there, that it would be forwarded to the state. And because I was one of the first ones that had turned it in, that I should hear something fairly soon, but we all know what that is. And if that's not true, it's still sitting there along with the other several applications. I know that this commission board cannot do anything about that, but I'm just making you guys aware. For those of us that are still on the end of needing assistance, this is what we're getting from the emergency management people. So I just want to give you guys an update of where we at. And we still, as of now, supposed to be out of the FEMA trailer next month. Any questions?
Thanks for that, babe.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry it's going that way.
Me too.
Anyone else?
Charles Wright, 200 Tanya Drive, Goldsboro. Phone number's 919-273-2099. Wayne County Commissioners, I come before you this morning to address neighborhood revitalization in relationship to the utilization of Hurricane Matthew Disaster Recovery Funds. I'm requesting the Commissioners commit to action during this meeting and assume the lead in promoting and facilitating community, facility, neighborhood, community meetings in each of the seven neighborhoods identified. Wayne County residents within these neighborhoods whose damaged homes help generate these disaster funds must have a voice and a seat at the table on how these funds are spent. Outreach, equity, transparent. Respectfully, Charles Wright. I'd like to move forward and let you know that I did supply the nice folders for you. I didn't put in too many pages for you to read because I know some of the commissioners don't like to do a lot of reading. So you can keep those folders, and as you get information referring to... But the part I want to bring to your attention is on the right side. It's called Wayne County Most Impacted Neighborhoods. And what I want to let the Commissioners know, HUD, along with the county, along with the state, went through a lot of research. And they identified seven specific neighborhoods within Wayne County that had the most impact and the most severe damage from homes. And if you, when you see on that sheet, it rates it in order, and that's how it's rated in all four counties. So I just extrapolated just what relates to Wayne so you wouldn't have to look at Fayetteville and all the other counties. But that's included behind in the back.
Mr. Wright, you need to give the clerk a copy of that. And I actually have to distribute that to the Commissioners next time you bring something.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I did put the actual copies from the state, from the book, from the actual HUD grant, so you know this is legitimate. I'm just not making up figures. I just did that cover sheet to make it easier on your eyes and easier for you to understand. I did add the part down the bottom where it says allocation of funds flow chart, and I wanted you to pay attention to that the most. Because what I did is I gave certain scenarios out of the seven most impacted neighborhoods. And in the first scenario, I said if the money was shared individually, this is how much it would be for each neighborhood impacted. If the monies were shared based upon the damage in that particular neighborhood, then those were the amounts. So I asked you to look at that and consider that when you make allocations for what's called neighborhood facilities improvement. Because there should be some relationship and some equity. If a small neighborhood has small damage and a large neighborhood has large damage, it's the same way the state and the federal. So that way, Virginia didn't get more money than North Carolina. And the four counties that was identified got the majority of the money, and not all 50 counties. And it should go all the way down to the neighborhoods. So we shouldn't stop and use equitable and perform outreach and be transparent. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else today? All right, I'm going to close the public comments section and move on to the important committee. Mr. Daugherty.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to recommend the appointment of Dustin Pike to the Wayne County Tourism Development Lots. I'd like to put this form of motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Bear with me on this one. We'd like to recommend the reappointment of Mary Ann Dudley and Farat Pradjapati to the Wayne County Tourism Development Lots. I'd like to put this form of motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Any more, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
We'd like to recommend the appointment of Tommy Gibson to the Wayne County Board of Health. I'd like to put this form of motion.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
That concludes.
All right, whenever the consensus ended, pretty much at length earlier. Are there any questions about that? If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, going into new business, I think we've got a presentation from Sergeant Jason Hill.
And the sheriff. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. You approved a grant a couple of years ago for a DWI task force. So I asked to be on the agenda for a few minutes this morning so that we could give you an update, tell you how it compared with other agencies in the state. And I'll turn it over to Sergeant Hill this time. Thank you.
Good morning. As you know, in 2015, we applied for and was given a grant for the 400 DWI task force. This is a traffic unit that specifically focuses on DWI enforcement as well as education. Since October 1st, 2015, that's when the task force actually began, and we started working. We have four-member team, myself, and three other deputies. To date, we have charged 625 DWI charges. Last year, the 2016-17 grant year, because it runs on the federal fiscal year, we had 313 DWI charges. Now, to compare that across the state, we, like I said, we are a four-man team, and we are one of the smallest teams in the state. There are 12 teams across the state that are federally funded through Governor's Highway Safety Program and NITSA. We're one of the smallest teams, just to give you a comparison, and I like to use Wake County. Wake County has a six-member team. And for the same year, they charged 189 DWIs. We were 313. That just gives you a little sense of how hard the guys that we have are working. They're out every night, just about, looking for DWIs. Now, we work mostly nights and weekends. Generally, what our schedule is, is Wednesday through Saturday or Wednesday through Friday. We work just about every holiday night this year. Because of the way Christmas fell, we actually didn't work Christmas Eve night or Christmas Day night because it's Sunday and Monday. We actually got to spend a little time with our family this year. But the Friday and Saturday up to, we work. The grant is a five-year grant, and as you know, it steps down each year. We are going, we are now in our third year, which is 75%. And I am at the moment writing the grant, the continuation for this coming-up year. And we'll be coming to you probably in the next couple of months with the resolution and everything we have to do for that new grant. I want to say this. The guys that we have had on the team, not necessarily myself, but the other three deputies that has worked, has worked with me. I don't think there's a better group of traffic and DWI enforcement officers in the state. These guys work tirelessly, and they work hard, and our numbers, Shelley.
You'd think that the general public would learn sooner or later that Dr. Drake is driving.
Well, I will say this.
In Wayne County. In Wayne County, anyway.
It is, it is getting better. The NITSA numbers, they're a year behind. Right now, we're working off 2016 numbers. Our numbers are getting better. We started, when we started the grant and the task force, our county out of 100 counties was ranked 13th for alcohol-related fatalities. After the first year of our grant, we went up to the number 21. We are now at number 24. So we are improving. There are statistics. There's, you know how statistics are. There's different groups of stats that NITSA keeps. Some, like the alcohol-related fatalities, we're getting better. Others, not so much. Fatalities involved unrestrained drivers, that's actually gotten worse. Young driver injuries and fatalities have gotten better, but not nearly enough. So there's a lot of work to be done as far as traffic safety goes.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is really not a question. They are working, and I'm assuming this is the group that... Apparently, they love Pipe for Princeton Road. I've been through three license checks in the last year. Two at Pipe for Princeton and, I mean, Pipe for Princeton and Nahuna Road, which I think Pipe for PD is involved in that one. But also at the four-way stop sign on Pipe for Princeton and 581. So far, I've managed to get through them. But I'm assuming that y'all are part of that program, and so thank you for, thank you.
And as far as the license checkpoints, the DWI checkpoints and stuff, those type of operations, it's within our grant, within our plan, that we do so many of those a quarter, a year. And there's only so many places you can go, you know, within Wayne County. So if you've only seen three, that's not too bad.
My question would be, are you getting any repeat offenders?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Slow learners.
And I'll be honest with you, it's the older generation. When I say older, I'm kind of, that's kind of my, my generation, really. 40 to, probably 40 to 60. That's, that's who the repeat offenders are. The younger, you know, 21 to 30. They've grown up with boozer to lose it, don't drink and drive. They've grown up seeing that on TV, on billboards, on the sides of cars and stuff. So if they do make that mistake, you don't see it too much as a repeat. I'm not going to say it doesn't happen, because it does. But most of our repeat offenders are the older generation. Yes, sir. You know, before the boozer lose it, the don't drink and drive, that type of promotion and advertisement is really prominent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would just be curious. Is it possible a younger generation are using some stimulant that's not detectable as alcohol is going to go up in the wind and you can smell it? But is it likely that we may be missing something because of a... but is it likely that we may be missing something because of an undetectable nature, maybe something else?
Yes, to an extent, yes, sir. I would say, we have, we have deputies, task force officers, that are specifically trained on drug impairment. They know what to look for and then how there's specific tests and an evaluation that we do to, to look for the, the signs and symptoms of drug impairment, because they can be different than alcohol impairment. But I will say that a majority of the drug impaired drivers that we do find are from the younger generation. They're, obviously, you can't lump them into that one category. There are older generations, 30 to 40-year-olds and stuff like that, that, because of the epidemic that we're seeing with heroin and narcotics.
So this is, this follow-up question is just a, your opinion question, not, trying not to look at some statistic or something. If the young, and first, let me applaud the younger generation for not being repeat offenders and probably waking up with that bad headache the next day. But would you, would you think that, is it this, the non-detectable nature of it, or would you, would you attribute more accidents to the generation who's using alcohol, or the younger generation who may be using something else that's comparable in?
Well, the, and that's hard to say. As far as drug impaired, NHTSA and those organizations that actually collect the data and, and put out the statistics, they're a little behind on the drug impairment. They're getting better. It's, it's getting better. But there's really no statistic on drug impaired fatalities or drug impaired accident or crashes or anything like that. It's only alcohol-related. So there is a good, it is possible that a lot of those crashes and fatalities that occur where there was no alcohol detected possibly could be from some type of drug. That is, that is possible.
So to close this, and not specifically on a humorous note, is it, is it anyone's opinion that it might be better to follow the lead of the younger generation and switch to what your stimulant might be rather than stay with the drug?
My, my advice to...
I wouldn't draw that.
And I try to tell everybody this. Anytime I talk to any group of people, we talk to Seymour Johnson, we talk to high schools, church groups, civic groups, anybody that'll listen to us. If, if you drink, if you use a drug, whether it's prescription, illicit, over the counter, that has some type of side effect, like Benadryl, for, for instance, or something like, like a Tylenol PM, that has, throw out a big word here, like Diphethromine, which is what's in Benadryl. If you use any of that, whether it's recreational or because you're hurting, don't drive.
Right.
It's that, it's just that simple. Don't drive. There are too many options in the world we live in today to where you would not have to get behind the wheel. There's Uber, there are taxis, there's Jetway. Phone a friend, there's just too many options. And that's my, that's my message to anybody that'll listen. If you use any of these impairing substances, don't drive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what y'all do, try to make the road safe.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, Chair. Okay, now we have a presentation by Amy Bauer.
Doesn't this run by itself? I think it runs on.
Transition.
Just as soon as... Yeah. Perfect. Okay. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to talk about the enrollment of the 135th United States Scholar Troop that was formed in 1865 here in Goldsboro, North Carolina. There were 1,154 men altogether. 220 of them are on this roll call that are North Carolinians. This is a historical event that happened in Goldsboro that no one knew about for about 150 years. And it's taken us three years to do all the research, do all the pension records, and on April 6th through the 8th of this coming year, we're going to be doing a Living History Weekend to tell the story of what happened in Goldsboro. We talk about New Bern, their draw is that they have the water, or Savannah has the moss on the trees and Charleston has this, but Goldsboro has the 135th, which is highly unusual. It took me almost a year to get everyone to understand that we really actually have this troop. It was that far lost in the, in the rolls. So in order to do that, my husband and I have spent several trips to Washington pulling their pension records, so we will be able to tell the story in their own words. We'll be able to tell it from the slavery through the military and afterwards because of this. So on April 6th, we have a music drama that we'll be doing with the music of the Civil War era. And then on Saturday, we have six scholars, African-American scholars, who are coming to tell the story of how this all came about. And including the fact that these men were in the Grand Review on May 24th, 1865, in Washington, DC. And it's been a big debate in the scholar world that no African-American troop were able to walk and march in the Grand Review. Oddly enough, in their own words, and here's some of the men's graves, they did march in their own, in the Grand Review, under their regimental flag, in their regiment. These are very proud, very hardworking and deserving, our honor men. And I'm hoping that you will help us with this. And according to the prayer we had this morning, I'm hoping that you will grant us $5,000 to match the city grant so that we can continue to work on this. Any questions?
Questions.
Oh, please, I have, I can answer all of them. You know, this started with Gerald Lynn's talk about her ancestor in the 14th, and that's how I found out about the 135th. So we have 30 men that are in our area in Wayne County. We have a couple of men who were, came back home, bought farms, and one man, Philip Fort, he sent his two sons, one to medical school and one up to the University of Pennsylvania to become a teacher. We have a man by the name of Jack Sherard, whose family has known about him, and they still own the land, and they bought the house back to keep him in the family. These are really wonderful men. Any questions? Are you interested in history?
Give us a little time to discuss it among ourselves. We've got some time, it looks like you're not doing until October, I mean, excuse you, April.
Yes, sir, we're not doing until April. I should tell you that the North Carolina Legislature, John Bell and Don Davis are both working together to put this through this legislature, and in May, there'll be a special proclamation, and we'll all be down at the legislature. It'll be open forum, so all of the senators can sign the bill, the flag's being flown over, and there's funds to be had to help us with this continuous education.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I believe we have Paula Edwards up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to come and just let you, make you aware as well as the public of a couple of special events that we have happening at the Peggy M. Seeger Senior Center. Let me see if I can say this with that, it's a tongue twister, but the Wayne County Arts Council's Grassroots Arts Program sub-grant is sponsoring two of our events. One event that we have is to celebrate Valentine's, we're going to have Starlight Dance Band, and they will be performing on Friday, February 29th, from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. We are opening this up to seniors that are 50 years of age or older, and will have, is free and have some light refreshments during this time. Another event that this sub-grant is sponsoring is to celebrate Black History Month, we have the Drummers World coming to Peggy Seeger Senior Center. We're excited about this. This is their first time there, and the drummers and dancers will perform on Friday, February 23rd, from 6:30 PM until 8:00 PM. And this event also will be open to seniors 50 and older, and will have some light refreshments, and it's free. And then one, and if you have any questions about any events that I'm mentioning, please feel free to call Rob Phillips, my senior center program manager, at 731-1589 for more information. And another event that I wanted to talk about is our annual Senior Health Fair, Senior Games Health Fair. And that's going to be on the first Friday in February, and that's on the 2nd, February 2nd, from 9:30 AM until 12:00, and it will again be at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center. And it's a kickoff event for Senior Games that's coming, and registration forms will be available on that day during the Health Fair, and we'll offer free health screenings. We had a packed house last year, and we had a lot of support for 30, from 30 or more vendors that have a lot of information that are senior health-related, but we'll have screenings such as skin cancer, hearing, vision, dementia, depression, arthritis, blood sugar, blood pressure, fall risk assessment. We also hoping to collaborate with, with the Goldsboro Police Department to have the expired medicine drop-off. We haven't received confirmation just yet, but you can call and check to see if we will have that later on this month. We will have a free bagged lunch, there'll be door prizes, and this is free and open to the public, so we hope that you can come. It's a great opportunity, have some screenings done and, and to meet with other health professionals and have maybe some questions answered, and it's, we, we have a great time. And I brought with me today Stacia Fields from Parks, Goldsboro Parks and Rec, and one of the ambassadors, Senior Games ambassadors, which is Ms. Pauline, and they're going to just step up and talk to you a little bit about the Senior Games that's going to be happening real soon. If y'all want. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, as Paula said, I'm Stacia Fields, I'm the coordinator for Wayne County Senior Games, and this will be our 30th year of Senior Games across the state, and about our 24th holding our own games right in Wayne County. And I don't think that I've seen any of you guys out there playing with us, and we start at 50, so I'm pretty sure that any of you would be eligible.
I sent my wife.
You sent your wife, thank you. But we do offer events through the whole month of April, everything from fun stuff like backyard shuffleboard and horseshoes, to all of the track events, swimming events, and everything, and so it is a lot of fun. Our registration fee is $10, and that covers everything that you could want to do for the whole month, except bowling and putt-putt. Those two are held off-site, and so those facilities have their own fees that they do charge. But it is a lot of fun, a lot of great camaraderie, and we hope that you will consider joining us. I know that our participants would love to see our county leaders out there playing around with them and having a good time. But Pauline is our latest ambassador, and I'm going to let her fill you guys in on a little bit also.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, once again for having us here. I know last year was my first year coming here as ambassador. This is my second year, and I love it very much. I'd just like to ship, Happy New Year. Okay. I'd like to share a quote, "Senior Games is about embracing aging and being never too old to play, to learn, and to share," end of quote. Yes, Senior Games is just one of those things that we are just happy to have here in Wayne County. It gives the 50-plus and better an opportunity to stay active, to keep moving, to improve balance, and to have fun and fellowship. And within all this, there's over 53 different categories of different things people can do. Active activities, physical activities, those who are not so much physical, there are the other arts that they can participate in, like the heritage, civil striders, or the paintings. So they don't have to be pressured into just being physical with the shuffleboards and the billiards and all that type of stuff. There's something for everyone. And we do hope you can come out during the month of April. I think you would be extremely impressed at what 50-plus can do, and who knows, you might decide to fill out a registration and join us one year. And again, we want to say thank you so much for having us here again, and my job as ambassador is to assist this lady here, the coordinator...
She's the best.
...with promoting the games and also to recruit applicants, I mean, participants. So I do all I can to assist, whatever it is, and again, we want to thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Do you guys have any questions about Senior Games or any of our events, any of the arts that Pauline mentioned? We also have the Follies, and this year, that'll be on April 19th. That's our, our acting, dancing, all kinds of performing arts that are part of Senior Games, they're judged as well. The winners from our local games for second and third place do get to go on to Raleigh to State to compete if they want to. A lot of our participants are here just to have fun in their own community, but we've got some that are very competitive and want to go on to the next level, and we are able to offer them that as well.
And the bottom line, it's about fun, you know, it's amazing. Yeah, I'm a senior, but I'm so impressed with the 70-year-olds and the 80-year-olds, and we have 90-year-olds out there, and they can walk, they do the different 500K, 200K, 1,500K, and I mean, that's so inspirational to me. And I tell myself, I hope I can do that in 30, for 30 more years. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to be part of something positive. So please come out, even if you don't participate, show up one day, you know, and just, you'll be impressed with what Wayne County seniors can do.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
I probably need to clarify something. My wife volunteered on her own, I did not send her.
And what activities does your wife do?
Lord, I don't remember.
Oh, okay.
I didn't go with her.
Well, I'm glad she was part of us, because we did have a lot of fun. Thank you, gentlemen, so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hennecker, an update?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board commissioners. Just want to give you a quick update on where the county is and what we're doing on the CDVG Disaster Recovery Grant. As you're aware, the applicant intake center is still at the Veteran Service Centers, and it was open the full month to December, and the hours on that have been extended until February 8th, 2018. Originally, the state said that they would be closing on January 15th, but they will be open until February 8th. In addition to the intake of applications for all house... Originally, the state said that they would be closing on January 15th, but they will be open until February 8th. In addition to the intake of applications for all housing activities under the project, the intake counselors are also determining the eligibility for the HUD Housing Assistance. And again, just want to reiterate that these are not county employees, that this is a program that is run through the state. We're just providing them the space at the Veterans Service Center to allow for a more centralized location for them. But also, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. In January, we'll begin working with the city of Goldsboro and the town of Mount Olive on the subgrantee agreements that will be between the municipalities and the county. Goldsboro and Mount Olive will be responsible for implementing the activities directly benefiting their citizens. They will also be responsible for satisfying all the HUD compliance requirements that apply to the expenditure of the grant or funds that they will receive from the county. So we'll receive the funds, and they're responsible for all of the applications and the implementation of those funds within those municipal limits. Also, just to let you know, we will also begin working with Goldsboro, Fremont, and Pikeville regarding their stormwater drainage issues. So Pikeville and Fremont, you know, do not have the staff, so Chip and W.H. Harris will do that work for them. We need additional information from them about exact location of drainage piping and households that will be affected before we can begin the environmental process. And then we'll discuss any changes in the storm drainage needs that may have occurred since the grant was first proposed, as well as any changes in the priorities in the storm drainage work that the municipalities may have deemed necessary. But I do want to thank Chip and also Dave Harris for the work that they have done staying on top of this grant and the implementation of it. We meet weekly to make sure that we're doing things that we're supposed to do from the county end as we try to help facilitate getting the projects out and the funding there.
Yes, sir. This, listen, I'm not sure whether this is a question for you or for Chip or for both. Taking into consideration the two folks that came before us this morning that had a question or a comment or a concern about the recovery and our FEMA and our health. Chip, would you speak a little bit about what's being done, and is there some other venue that needs to be put in place other than, please speak to that.
Okay. I would like to clarify one thing with the one gentleman talking about neighborhood revitalization. That's not part of this grant. Some CDBG grants that we have gotten in the past are neighborhood revitalization grants. This is a housing-specific grant. 80% of it anyway goes to housing. That's open to every citizen in the county, in every municipality as well. So you have to be low to moderate income, and you have to have a housing need. Those housing activities are, I'm going to read them to you, single-family rehab, single-family reconstruction, mobile home repair, mobile home replacement, temporary rental assistance, housing repair and reimbursement if repairs were already made, flood insurance assistance, and then there is for rental categories, a small rental rehab project. Also, a part of this grant agreement was a community recovery activity. This was all identified in your resilience plan that the state did. We have to follow that resilience plan as the items are identified. Those were the flood and drainage improvements that Mr. Honeycutt referenced. We're already meeting with those jurisdictions on that for Goldsboro, Pikeville, and Fremont. Emergency shelters, installation of emergency generators at shelters, and then a fire station for Seven Springs Fire Department. They, we were able to obtain other funding, so that'll free up that money from this grant that can be redirected to some other activity within it, probably back to, towards your housing line items. But it's not a neighborhood revitalization grant. That would be very discriminatory of this program to open it only to seven identified neighborhoods. It's available to every person in the county. You have to be low to moderate income, and you have to qualify. It's about a 25-page application. When they ask for the materials, you need to be prepared to present it, come back and stick with it, and see it through, and meet all their needs. What happened is, we got several documents with the state that we're awaiting a return on. Our grant agreement needs to be signed by the state and returned to the county. We have the agreement for our contractor, David Harris. That is with the legal review at the state. That needs to be returned to us. All these items are going to be returned before we could ever take action on implementing any of the programs. So there's several things sitting at the state. The intake application, even though it's open through February 8th, after that, people can still apply. They'll have to apply through Mr. Harris's office directly. So you could be taking applications two years from now if there is a need for it. The other item with the temporary housing that the lady has, it is true that it's an 18-month program for temporary housing, and that is from the date of the disaster. So they have 18 months of housing, and then they remove the home, and there's, there's no, there's no follow-up on that. That's strictly their rules. She has applied for CDBG. She's in the holding tank there. Her application is there. Once the grant agreement is returned, and they release us to go to work, then Mr. Harris can proceed with the projects.
So in other words, when our chairman said out loud that he's, we're all sorry that it's taken so long, there's nothing that we can vote on to make it get any quicker or facilitate any?
Nobody is sorrier than I for it taking so long. But that is, we're simply operating at the speed of state and federal government.
And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do this update, is that we appreciate the work that Chip and Dave've done. We have, and George did a great job on this as well. We really have stayed on top of this as much as we can throughout the paperwork. You've seen the grant applications, you've seen the policies and procedures that we've had to do. We have done everything that we can do on our end to facilitate and to move this project and hopefully get the funding released as quickly as possible. So again, Chip's just done a gentleman's job on the work that he's done.
And Chip, one final thing I believe is worthy. You said that the program as it's outlined is available to every citizen in Wayne County.
Can apply.
Can apply. So we're not seeing that out any seven neighborhoods, 21 neighborhoods. It's everyone in Wayne County can apply based upon the regulation.
That's right.
And the site that we're providing for the state to put their folk in is our input in that to ensure that there's a place for every citizen in Wayne County to access. And thank you media for being here, and I know that you all can put it in the newspaper and explain it in a way that almost every person, including myself, can read it.
But one of the things, you know, we've identified early on that we have more needs than we do funding. And I forget the exact number that we got funded for, George is much better than my personal, was.
Now, that goes back to your hazard mitigation grant program as a different grant. There's a lot of unmet need there with buyouts, so, and so sometimes those people that are, were in that hazard mitigation grant program, they have been notified of this possibility that this program may can help them, like Mistress Figaroa. They applied for hazard mitigation grant program, they did not receive funding, but she applied through CDBG for assistance, and hopefully she will be eligible to get it when it becomes available.
All right.
One thing that I want to make sure we do know, that even after that February 8th deadline, the applications can still be taken. We don't want to, you know, I don't want, I want to get as many people in that can be helped. It's just taking some time to get it going, but it's going to be a good thing in the backside when we, when we, when we do get it going.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But we'll, one of the things that we commit, we'll keep you updated on the progress.
I wanted to thank the Veterans Service Office for coordinating this, because she's been having to send some of her groups who regularly use the Veterans Office there to other places, and I hope we can, we'll continue to find places for those people to meet.
And I also want to thank Paula Edwards. They were supposed to do some tax training for veterans, you know, we do the, offer free tax. The Council on Aging is willing to accommodate that since the time ran over, so it really has been truly a staff effort and a Wayne County department team trying to work to make sure that we're open and that we can provide those services.
Anyone else? Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Chip.
All right. Thank you, Chip.
Moving right on to the Saddle Surplus property on 1501 Edgerton Street, owned and owned by the city in the county.
Yes, sir. As you can see, there is, let me get to the right page. There's two, or the property at 1501 Edgerton Street that is jointly owned by the city and the county is requested to be sold and proceeds to be split with the county.
Mr. Chairman, I still believe.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? If I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. And we'll move right on to the crest for the ALP aid application. I'll choose that as well.
Yes, sir. ALP is the Airport Layout Plan. We have approved of working with W.K. Dixon to update our airport layout plan. The funding, though, this is a grant that will pay for that ALP plan. We will pay for 10% of match that'll come from our eastern regional funds, but we asked request, or request for approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What is the total cost of, what is the total grant, and what is our 10%?
The total grant is $171,000, and then we pay 10% of that, so about $17,100. But that'll come from the eastern regional funds that we have set aside for the airport.
Anything else? All right. If I was the favorite, the motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Video time.
When you see Bria McCoy, please thank her for the hard work that she's done as the only staff member until this coming Thursday, when we get to announce our new media manager. She's done a phenomenal job. I had it ready, and we did that up video.
Need to bring Bria in?
I'm going to make it easier to. [laughter]
Good job.
Good job.
Let's give Bria a hand.
I agree.
She does great work. All right, moving right on to our banquet chairs.
Yes, sir. You should have a copy of the bid for banquet chairs for the Maxwell Center.
Nope, that's easier.
And the amount, I believe it's $116,000. Excuse me, $117,728.84. We did receive five bids. The low bidder was disqualified for not meeting the bid requirements, so we'd like to recommend taking the second lowest bidder, and we ask for your approval.
I did not see the number of chairs. I saw everything else on there, shipping and everything, but I didn't see the number of chairs. You ain't even divide that back through and see how many chairs we're talking about?
See it in here.
Allison, are you doing that?
Yes, sir. I was trying to see if I saw one here, but I'll send them a note.
We got to have them.
I know, I just told we got them now.
So we make sure we got what we needed the first time.
If I know it changed, we have enough.
This is maybe we put in his budget?
Yes, sir. That was, we've already, this is within the budget that was already been approved, and we'll boost some money for his capital output.
Y'all want to hold up on the vote?
Is that tables and chairs or just chairs?
Just chairs.
Okay. Has he bought the tables?
I think tables have come separately.
Oh, okay.
Looks like about 2,000.
2,000 chairs.
2,000. That ought to get it done.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we got the number. If there's any discussion, well, is there a motion to approve? Motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, the engineering services, Withers, Ravenale.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. In working with Chris Gaddis and the WCDAs Board, one of the things we needed to do is look at the Bryan Property Holdings, which we now can call the Goldsboro Industrial Campus. It's the name that has been recommended that we call the Bryan site by the WCDAs Board, but we sent out requests for qualifications to engineers looking to help us design an entryway, access, lay out the property. We were even looking at
even looking at making it a certified industrial site. So we really needed to make sure that we had the right engineering firm to help us. Again, we received six mittels. We interviewed three. We had an interview committee made up of Jim Daniels, Gary Southwick, Kendall Lee, Noelle Woods, Crystal Geddes, and myself. And we would like to recommend to begin negotiations with Withers and Ravenel to do that design work. Withers and Ravenel sold a lot of industrial parts. One of the things that sold us on them is their ability to get grants for such type of industrial parts that are not tied to jobs or not tied to new development coming in yet, so that we can get a lot of grants for all this pre-work that we need to be done and put an infrastructure in.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All with the favor, please raise your right hand. By the way, I suggested to the mayor, since we put Goldsboro on that, that, you know, they might could get name it right, say the right price.
I agree with that. Yes, sir.
He didn't offer any, let's put it that way. Okay, that is all I had on the, that's all I got right now. County managers comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that this chair is a little bit more comfortable than the bench that I've been sitting on the last nine months. I appreciate y'all's patience as well in trying to get through this agenda, and hopefully it'll be a little bit smoother next month or next meeting. The biggest thing we need to talk about and to confirm is we've asked about a joint meeting with the school board to have Kevin Littard with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners come and do a presentation on school funding, the history, the bonds, and where he thinks it's going in the future. It is an incredible presentation. We did get the, a date that is set for February 21st, but we do not have a time or location at this point. So wanted to check in with y'all to see where you wanted to possibly do.
Well, it's something that should be able to get into Maxwell Center by then.
I think we tried before.
Well, obviously permits are supposed to be done this month. Now, we were gonna try to have our retreat, but we couldn't get in for that.
Right. That's right. That's right. We may, we may be able to get in the Maxwell Center.
Well, let's check on that.
All right. Do you want to do this? What time would you like to do this at?
What do y'all think? Breakfast or lunch?
Mr. Doherty likes 7:30.
No.
Okay, okay.
How long is that presentation?
I would say an hour, a good hour, and then, yeah, and then maybe a meal afterwards. I think we're, yeah, it's a good hour.
Like a 10 to 12 or something like that?
That should work.
What was the date again?
The 21st.
Could we do it, our attorney has said we have something that morning. Could we do it lunch and then have the presentation?
Okay. Start at 12 then?
Yes, sir. Start at 12 and try to get by, done by 2.
12 to 2, okay.
My kind of meeting.
And also to remind you that we do have our board retreat scheduled for next Thursday at Lane Tree, beginning at 8 o'clock.
Really? You couldn't get into the Maxwell Center?
We tried.
And that's at what time?
8 o'clock in the morning. Oh, the 26th.
Oh, 26th, thank God. I was looking at the wrong day. My bad.
25th, I'm sorry. I'm a day late and a dollar short.
Yeah.
25th, I'm sorry, next Thursday.
That needs to be put on the calendar. It's not on my calendar.
It's on my.
What it was gonna be?
Border trip.
Lane Tree.
I thought it was gonna be the Maxwell Center. I got it on my calendar.
We tried. We couldn't get the C O to allow us to be in.
I made the command decision after Carol told me what was the. Get the chamber back with that.
What time did you say that was?
8 o'clock.
And if any of our state delegations listening, I need you to respond. We would like them there for the early part.
I saw somewhere where that board retreat was going to be carrying over until Friday, but that's not the case.
We're gonna finish in time.
Okay. So we're gonna do everything on the 25th.
Unless y'all want to drag it out.
No.
I'm on a full day work day.
Well, I do want to thank, you know, we do have, may have a possible snow event again tomorrow. I want to thank O E S and also the work that Kendall's staff did with facilities and trying to get the parking lots and the walkways. And they really did an incredible job of trying. It was frozen solid and the work that they did. And even though some places were still closed, we're, they did work hard at it, and I just appreciate the work that they did do. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Comas, Mr. Rebell.
Mr. Chairman, due to some unusual circumstances, I was unable to make any meetings, but not making any comments this morning. I would like to be a good guy and yield all of my comments to Mr. Doherty.
I yield them back to you.
Mr. Redcock.
Well, you know, with the holidays and all, we hadn't had a whole lot to go to. I do want to remind the commissioners tonight of the Wayne County Fire Fighters Association installation of offers from banquet tonight at Lane Tree, and all of you are invited. Big glad to see you there. Also, I want to praise some agencies in the county. I think it was night before last, had a working structural fire in Pikeville at the rest home. And I want to commend the agencies that responded to that, handled herself very professionally, especially the Pikeville Fire Department and their mutual aid departments, which were Fremont and Hunter, the Sheriff Department, O E S, Fire Marshal, and I'm probably leaving someone out, Wayne Net. I mean, it was, that could have been a real tragedy, as it worked out. The sprinkler system and fire suppression system in the building in the kitchen worked just like it was posed to. But I just want to commend all of those agencies on a well, a job well done. I mean, it, to my knowledge, that's probably one of the, we've had calls to rest homes all the time, but this was, this was, this was the real deal. I mean, when the call come in, it's at a working kitchen fire. And I just want to commend those agency for the job that they did on taking care of those people because those patients are special. They're all elderly, have dementia, and I was very proud of our agencies in Wayne County. And also, as some of y'all know, I have a granddaughter that's in the hospital. I received a card from the staff on the fourth floor, and ladies and field and everyone that signed it. Y'all just do not know what that card meant for me and my family. I mean, that is, it was very touching, and I really do appreciate it, and my family appreciates it for y'all's prayers and thinking about my family. Thank y'all. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I went to the Martin Luther King Luncheon yesterday, and I want to, wanted to allude to part of that in just a minute, but I want to take my comment time this morning and go back to our commissioner meeting back on December 19th. And of course, this is not going to make the newspapers. That's okay. It's a controversial issue, always has been. But I want to go back to our Board of Commissioners meeting on the 19th when David, Devin Madden was here. There's the head director. He asked about the bad debt write-off for $31,122 for people who he says that are in our country mostly illegally, have no social security number, and also the subsequent news august article in editorial that followed on December 21st. I am in agreement, 100%, that it doesn't seem fair to pay for services for people here illegally, especially with seemingly fraud and abuse may be present. It also seems that illegal immigrants can, in some cases, and I know of some personally, that can receive services more readily than legal citizens can. But let's look at what we do know. For the past 20 years or more, U.S. Presidents and Congress, state legislatures, and even local elected officials, we are part of this group, have not been willing to address border security and/or even implement immigration laws that are already in the books. Illegal immigrants are here due to open borders and failed policies that allow people to enter our country at free will, unopposed. Number two, my understanding is from President Trump and others is that illegal immigrants that are already in our country will not be deported unless they have a criminal record. And I think that's probably what will happen. The news august is correct. Deportation is not a good option. What other option does it leave us with if deportation is not a good option? President Trump, I have to give him credit. He's addressing the border security, but until immigration reform is complete, what do we do with illegal immigrants already here in our country? Are we willing to deny health and human services to these people, including women and children? There's not very little said in the article, in the Goldsboro News August, in the editorial or the front page article. There's very little said about the fact that we are dealing with living, breathing, human beings created by God. Who knows? Some of us, as elected officials, may be sitting in this seat today because maybe someone in our ancestry came to this country illegally. But here's the crutch of this whole thing from my December meeting. The English dictionary defines the word Grinch as a person who does not like other people celebrating or enjoying themselves, especially a person who does not like Christmas. That's the English definition. To me, the use of the word Grinch and its implication by a commissioner and the news august, whether in jest or not, was inappropriate. To grandstand this sensitive issue and also at the same time demean this sensitive issue down to a monetary value of $31,122, this cuts to the very fabric of our society and what America is all about. Seems like we have crossed this path on this commission board over the past few years on some other funding issue. But let me say, yesterday at the Martin Luther King Luncheon, Addie Wright Thomason, keynote speaker, was describing qualities of a leader. One quality that she pointed out, among many, that stood out to me was that she said a person that cares about, quote, "the least, the last, and the lost" is a true leader. So my point today is, is that we need to secure the borders. We need to implement immigration laws fairly and equally to all. And this issue of what we were facing from Devin Madden of $32,000, $31,122, will this issue not go away if we do that? We need to remember that we all are equal in God's sight, including illegal immigrants. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Mail and thank Mr. Bell for taking the time out to come to the Martin Luther King Celebration. And I was given the opportunity to make remarks for the Board of Commissioners. And of course, our esteemed manager was there. And I think when they called the department heads to stand up, although it was quite a distance, I saw several of our department heads were also there. And we did have a good speaker. It was well attended. There was a good cross-section of Wayne County representative. It was, it was more diverse, I think, this time than it had been on some, several other occasions. So I appreciate all the different ethnic groups that did come out, and it was, it was a very well-attended affair. One of the quotes that was prepared for me said, that Martin, Dr. King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." I remember early in the 2010 timeframe, the United States Department that deals with illegal immigrants made a sweep of Wayne County and some surrounding counties. And a lot of Hispanic folk who were here not legally left. And paperwork was put in place to bring a lot of the Haitian population in to work at Butterball. And that is Butterball, Smithfield, and some of the light plants that process food, that's where a lot of that population is working at. Sometimes I heard folks say that how much of the work is being taken away from Native Americans. I don't think that's too much the case. I've had people who come, who has, when I was working in the school system, who came looking for jobs in the school system, who had worked at Butterball and places, and the well, and the working condition was a little strenuous. And so they, they looked for a different environment. I have a large number of Haitian folk that I come in contact with on a regular basis, and they have come to this country, and they're working real hard. And it distresses me whenever the leadership of our nation can say harmful and hurtful things about folk who are here working hard. And, you know, they're buying food from Pigly Wiggly and Food Line, buying some clothes and belts, and hopefully they're reading the newspapers. And so they're, 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 they're integrating themselves into the community as best they can and where appropriate. And so we just need to be mindful of the things that we celebrate every year that Dr. King stood for. And let's be as kind to our fellow man as possible. I yield my minutes.
Mr. Doherty. Sometimes silence is gold. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hurley.
I just wanted to mention that I attended my first Eastern Carolina Council of Government meeting last week, and I'm trying to get acclimated to that, but I look forward to serving. And I'm probably be calling on Paula Edwards to get better verse and a little more knowledge of their program area. And Mr. Chairman, I look forward to our annual goals and budget retreat next week and establishing goals for our county.
As well as myself. We did not finish our closed session this morning, so we do need to go back to closed session for the same reasons that you said earlier.
Same, same reason.
Okay, is there a motion to go to closed session?
Same reason.
Motion on the floor, session, raise your right hand.